Let's call the City of Marine City Commission to Order, Marine City Fire Department, Thursday, December 5th, 2019, 7:00 PM. Could we please take a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Flosson.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Verkeman is absent this evening, and City Manager Levin.
Here.
All right, moving. Can I get a motion to excuse Sheriff Verkeman, please?
So moved.
Support.
Motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post carried. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. I do want to make one note, we will not have to do Item 11A. That can be removed, but we could just skip over it in the agenda, so as we get to it, we just won't be addressing that issue. That was left over from last year, we didn't have, we don't have to do it this year.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with Item 11A. Amended?
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on it? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Post carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name, and limit your comments to five minutes. This is the time for you to raise issues. The Commission will not respond, but issues will be followed up upon as necessary. Anyone like to speak? Rosalie.
Again, I want to, I want to read a letter into the minutes. With just 20 days until Christmas, we are in a season where you often hear the message of the angels, peace on earth, goodwill towards men. I am asking as a person with several disabilities for more than goodwill or belovedness. I am asking you, as elected representatives of our city, for my civil rights under federal law to be, to be protected and enforced. You all agreed over a year and a half ago to leave part of 300 lease, part of 300 Broadway to Friends of City Hall. The lease states that the building has to be ADA accessible. The rent is $1. Why, as local officials in charge of a city-owned building, are you allowing my civil rights to be violated? Maybe you are not aware that access for the disabled is a civil right. Along with the letter, also enclosed, is a sheet with technical assistance on American Disability Act standards for the depart, from the Department of Justice Civil Rights Division. Notice the title on the left-hand corner. I am asking you to implement your lease agreement. The American with Disability Act has been around for almost 30 years. The architectural design standards for this law have been updated in 2010 and 2012. Uphold the law. That is what you took an oath to do when you were sworn in. On the city website, there are, we are advertising a Maritime Christmas, including activities at 300 Broadway. I attended the open house of the teen center, and it is modern, beautiful, and ADA accessible. On the other side of the building, where the Friends of City Hall are leasing, disabled persons cannot access. That side of the building does not even have an occupancy permit. Why are you letting it to be occupied when the disabled cannot gain entry to programs advertised and promoted on the city website? Do not let the building be used for programs until the requirements you voted on are completed. Violating someone's civil rights is very serious and illegal. It is unlawful for Friends of City Hall to violate the civil rights of the disabled. It is even more serious that you, as elected officials, are allowing this. Sincerely, Rosalie Squires. I hope you really take this into consideration, because there's many avenues I can take to complain about this up the chain, because these, these laws have gotten more stringent in the last 10 years, and I don't want to do that, so I just really pray that you comply with the law. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Mrs. Squires.
Bray Squires, 211 Michigan Drive, Marine City. I know some people in wheelchairs, and with soldiers returning from our wars, whether in Iraq or Afghanistan, and, you know, wanting to participate, guys who have, and women, in wheelchairs, and they have a city event at a building, 300 Broadway, I don't know if it's ignorant of the law, or you're defying the law, or you just don't care. I think it's ridiculous that you sponsor these events in a place that has no access to people with disabilities. Thank you.
Anyone else? Laura.
Laura Scotch, 430 South Water Street. I'm here because I am part of the committee for the Maritime Christmas. So I just want to clarify something. This is not an event that is sponsored by the city. It is sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. There are a number of organizations and businesses that take part in the event, and it's a way for us to bring people into town, for us to give back to the community, and to do things for the community. We were approached, different organizations were approached to take part in it. River Rec Teen Zone will be opening up the doors, only to do cookie decorating, and just to be available. You know, we're going to have ice carving out in the grass. We'll have some music playing. Friends of City Hall is opening up just to play music. I'm not here to defend or, or anything, but I'm just saying, this is, it's just to open up to say, this building is still vibrant and alive, we want to keep it alive, and come and look at it. They are going to have music, but we do, we are ADA compliant in our section. Our bathrooms will be available. We do have handicap accessibility, so I just kind of want to clarify that, and for everybody to understand that this is a chamber event. It is a wonderful event, a lovely event, and, you know, in no way, you know, was it meant to offend anybody, so that's it.
Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, moving on to approval of the city minutes, regular meeting, November 21st, 2019.
So moved.
Support.
Any corrections, changes, or deletions to it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. 2020 meeting schedule, cancellation of the 2000, or the January 2nd meeting, sewer rate computation for year-end, and Tifa minutes, and community economic development, board minutes. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flosson.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Moving on to the 2018, 2019 audit presentation.
Mayor Vanabosh, City Council. My name is Curtis McBride, and I'm CPA from McBride Mending Company. I am the managing partner for our firm, I'm also our firm's audit and governmental accounting audit director. With me this evening is Samantha Hudson. She is an audit manager at our firm, and we are here this evening to present the results of the June 30, 2019 audit for the City of Marine City. Before we get into the slides, I just want to point out that we did actually hand out a physical copy of our presentation, if you'd like to follow along that way. I know sometimes it's a little difficult to see up at the top of the screen here. The only thing I do ask of you is that you do not share this physical handout with the general public, since it is not our full audit report, it does not contain our audit opinion. This is only for purposes of following along with this pre-assembly, so thank you for that chance. There are three types of opinions you can receive from your auditor. There is what we call a clean or unmodified audit opinion, which means that we believe your financial statements are accurate, and they're in compliance with our professional standards. And then there's what we call a modified audit opinion, which means that we feel they're in compliance, but there may be a few minor exceptions to that. And then the third one is what we call an adverse audit opinion, which means we don't think they're in compliance with our standards, and we don't believe your financial records are reliable. So I am pleased to announce that for the year-end of June 30, 2019, the city did receive a clean or unmodified audit opinion from our firm. So that's the highest opinion you can receive from your auditor. And I just want to clarify, that just simply means, we believe your financial statements are accurately stated. We are not providing any type of opinion on the financial health of the city, that's not the primary focus of our audit. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Samantha to get into the slides.
For first slide, we're going to talk about general fund. Just so that way everybody's on the same page, let Curtis and I talk about the general fund. We are actually talking about both your general fund, as you see it in all your budgets, and all your branch reports from the city, and also includes the capital projects fund as well. And that's because, under our professional standards, the capital projects fund doesn't qualify as a separate fund. You can have it for internal tracking purposes, but it actually does not have its own designated revenue source. It was funded primarily from transfers from the general fund. So that's why, when we talk about the general fund, you'll see, a lot of times in the actual audit financial statements, it's called the consolidated general fund, and we have consolidating statements showing how those two funds get combined together. So just keep that in mind as we're talking about some of our numbers from 2019, that when we're talking about the general fund, it includes the capital projects fund as well. So as of June 30, 2019, the general fund ended the year with total assets of about 2.2 million. The majority of that was in cash. The general fund also had total liabilities of about 145,000, and ended the year with a total fund balance of 2 million and about 46,000. Before we move on to the next one, a lot of, some questions we usually get when we're going through, talking about governmental financial statements and the health of the general fund especially, is, you know, is our general fund healthy? Are we at a good level? Is it appropriate? So there are some state guidelines out there that kind of specify where your fund balance should be at the end of the year on a minimum level. So the state minimum is about 10 to 15% of your total annual expenditures. There's also some other professional guidelines that make that range about 15 to 20, so really you want to make sure that you're averaging, you know, somewhere between 10 and 20% at the end of the year of your total overall expenditures. And at the end of 2019, the general fund ended the year at about 70% of total annual expenditures, which is definitely considered to be a healthy fund balance level. The next slide, we're going to go over kind of the changes that happened during the year in the general fund. During 2019, there was, it generated about total revenues of about 3.3 million. The majority of that came from tax revenues. It had total expenditures of about 3 million. It ended the year with an increase in its fund balance of about 441,000. Now, there's a couple changes that I want to highlight, because it can look a little misleading if you don't kind of know what's going on behind the numbers. The tax revenues, there was about 161,000 increase. That wasn't because of changes in rates or anything like that. That was actually because the city commission had voted previously to terminate the Tifa capture. So what happened there is all those, the 160,000 of tax revenues would have actually previously been recognized in the Tifa funds. So because that tax capture stopped, it's now accounted for in the general fund, and the general fund is able to use those funds as it needs to, not as reserved for those three Tifa districts it had in the past. So that's the big change there. The other one is in the other revenues, that's sitting at about 885,000 at the end of 2019, and that difference is actually 491,000 over last year, and that's primarily that Tifa transfer when the funds closed. It had some extra funds remaining into it that hadn't been spent yet. Those funds got distributed between both the city and St. Clair County, based off of some formulas and ratios on who, whose taxes basically were left over. And that was about $500,000 you received from Tifa into the general fund this year. So that's what that number primarily is. So when you look at those two, those are the primary changes in your revenues in 2019 over 2018. On the expenditure side, the general government category had a significant increase, and that was all attributable to the acquisition of the new Parker Street property, and as well as two additional vacant lands that were required during 2019. So that's what kind of drove that change. And in the public safety, there was a new police interceptor that was purchased during the year, and the police department also had bought the body cameras. So those were the two primary things that kind of created the larger increases over previous years in those two areas. The next slide, we're going to start getting into some of our trend and ratio analysis. These slides are kind of interesting, because they kind of show comparability in how the fund generated its revenues. So between 2019, 2018, there were some significant changes in the relationships, and as I kind of talked about before, a lot of that's because of that extra $500,000 you received from Tifa. One of the things, when we were developing the slides, was we pulled that number out and kind of competed it, if you hadn't received that extra money, what would your really, what would your percentages look like? You would actually be pretty much spot on with 2018 if we would have not had that extra revenue. So that extra one-time $500,000 from Tifa kind of throws off your relationships a little bit. So just kind of keep that in mind when you're looking at it, but that's pretty much your driving change. But overall, it's relatively consistent with that outlier of the other revenues from The next slide, we're showing the, kind of something similar with the general fund expenditure, and instead of showing it by function like we do on the financial statements, we broke it out by fund type, so we have it down into salaries and supplies and other areas, where you can kind of see how the general fund is utilizing its resources. And again, the primary differences there were a lot of the property acquisitions and capital outlay from the South Parker acquisition, the police car, and the body cameras. One of the other ones that kind of had a larger increase is in the professional and contractual services, and that was because the salvage title inspections were higher in 2019 over 2018. There was also some increased legal costs, which probably were kind of related to the property acquisitions. And then there was also some new software maintenance agreements that were signed for Microsoft Office. So that kind of accounted for your major changes there. And again, you know, you kind of take out some of those couple outlier things, your percentages end up being really close to how they have been in the past. That slide's kind of interesting, it kind of shows you kind of where the general fund uses its resources, and how it spends its funds. The next one, we're showing, because the tax revenues are about 50% of your revenue base, we're showing your 10-year historical trend. We've always done 10 years to be, kind of think it shows kind of a, where you've been, and especially with the big recession that happened and the big downturn, it's kind of interesting to kind of see how that's gone over time. So from 2010 to 2019, the general fund has actually lost 247,000 of its property tax revenues, and that's about a 13% change. One thing that we were doing while we were preparing for the slides is we went back even further, I believe 2004 was the furthest year back, and kind of went through to find, what year was it when the city had the highest property tax revenues? And that was actually 2008, when property tax revenues were at about 2 million and 39,000. So since 2008, which was about 12 years ago, the city lost about 340,000, or about 17% as of 2019. So you're still dealing with a lot of less tax revenues than you were, you know, 10, 12 years ago. So it's kind of puts things into perspective as you're working on budgets and how things are going. And the next slide is also kind of an interesting one to look at. Your primary revenue source has declined significantly, but you've actually managed to grow your fund balance in the general fund, which is actually a good thing. The big thing there is, the only way you can accomplish that is through budgeting. So you've actually managed to, you know, take that information in, look at the fact that your property tax revenues are down, and management, the city commission, and all the department heads have made the appropriate changes to be able to appropriately adjust for that. So that's kind of how you were able to get through that and be able to still keep a strong, healthy general fund fund balance. I'm going to turn you over to Curtis, so he can talk about the next couple of slides and wrap up our audit process.
I actually want to go back to the property taxes briefly, just to clarify a couple things. As Samantha had mentioned, you're, you have a lot less in property taxes to work with now than you did 12 years ago, and that's primary, primarily because of some of the constitutional limitations that have been placed on property taxes. So if you recall, back in, you know, 2008, 2009, and 2010, we were kind of in a housing market crisis. So what happened in those, those three years, housing values fell, they declined very, you know, sharply, you know, very rapidly. So you could have one year where you had a decrease in the value of a house of maybe 30%, for instance. So obviously, the property taxes followed, so you were collecting 30% less in property taxes on that house as a result. Well, because of Proposal A, which limits the property, the tax growth in individual properties to the lesser of inflation, or 5%, when you have a year where the real market value of that house recovers back to where it was, and, you know, up 30%, well, that limitation, that's where the taxable value comes from. That was incorporated into our, into our state law in 1994 with Proposal A. So the taxable value is growing at a much slower rate than the real economic value of the houses in the city. So that explains why it's recovering very slowly. And then on top of that, you have the Headley Amendment, which actually does the same thing to the city in its entirety as a whole. So those two things are really limiting the property tax growth throughout the city. It's not that the actual market values of the houses are declining, or the, or the properties in the city, it's because of those two limitations that are placed on property taxes. Obviously, back in 1993 or 1994, the legislation never envisioned a situation that we're in today, which I'm assuming is why those, those laws were passed. Now, moving on to the next two funds we're going to talk about, I'm going to talk about the major local street funds. Now, these two funds are quite a bit different than the general fund, in that these two funds primarily generate their revenues from the state of Michigan under the Act 51 Fund. So the state of Michigan actually distributes money to the city, they have to be set aside for the maintenance and construction of streets throughout the city. So here's the balance sheet for the street funds, starting with the local street fund. You can see the local street fund had about $414,000 of assets on hand at the end of the year. It had about $3,000 of liabilities against those assets to finish the year with an ending fund balance of about $411,000. The major street fund had about $641,000 of assets on hand at the end of the year. It had about $21,000 of liabilities against those assets to finish the year with an ending fund balance of $620,000. Now, in the case of both of these funds, both fund balance levels were actually more than 100% of annual expenditures. So similar to the general fund, both of these funds have healthy fund balance levels. Now, the thing you need to keep in mind about these two funds is that it's, it's typical for their fund balance levels to fluctuate drastically from year to year. So when you have a year when you have a lot of significant street projects going on, you're going to utilize that fund balance level, and in years where you don't have a lot of projects, you're going to be building that fund balance level back up. Now, on the next slide, we're looking at the income statement for these two funds. You can see the local street fund generated about $252,000 of revenues during the year. It spent about $192,000 during the year, and finished with an increase to its fund balance of about $60,000 during the year. The major street fund generated about $318,000 during the year, spent about $306,000 during the year, and had an increase to its fund balance of about $12,000. Now, some of the major projects that occurred during the 18, 19 audit year, in the local street fund, you had the North Bell River from DeGersi to the north of city limits project going on. Over in the major street fund, you had the West Boulevard project, and then you had North Bell River from Fairbanks to DeGersi. That was included in the street. So those were some of the major projects you had going on during the 18, 19 audit year. Now, the last fund I want to talk about briefly is the water and sewer fund. Now, this fund's quite a bit different, and this is what we call an enterprise fund. It's actually accounted for much differently than the general and the street funds. We call it an enterprise fund because it's, it actually functions more like a, like a private for-profit business. So in other words, the city charges the city residents for the use of the water and sewer system, and theoretically, it's supposed to be a self-sustaining fund. Here, we're looking at the balance sheet. You can see the water and sewer fund had about $7.5 million of assets on hand at the end of the year. That's primarily in capital assets, so that would be the actual water and sewer plant itself, all the major equipment associated with it. And you can see you had total liabilities against those assets of about $3.9 million to finish the year with a total net position of about $3.6 million. Now, you have three bonds outstanding at the end of 2019. So you had one for about $80,000, which matures in 2021. You also had a dwarf bond for $995,000 outstanding at the end of the year, that matures in 2026. And the third one is, you had an MDEQ bond of $280,000 outstanding, and that one matures in 2031. So those are the three bonds that you currently have outstanding in this fund. Really briefly, done with the funds, I just want to talk about our audit process in general. So our audit is performed on what we call all the major accounting functions, so this is what we're looking at, basically. We're looking at purchasing, cash receipts, utility billing, adjusting journal entries, payroll, and bank reconciliations, and we're actually looking at these utilizing techniques under our professional standards. So we're actually picking, for instance, a sample of invoices for purchasing, and we're looking at credit card charges and electronic payments. And we're making sure that these purchases are appropriate for the city, you know, they're in accordance with, with law, that they've been approved both by, you know, a department head, and eventually by you, the council, when it gets to the schedule of bills. We're making sure that the, the invoices have been checked for accuracy internally at the city, and we're obviously making sure they're, they're being posted correctly to your general ledger for accuracy. We're looking at cash receipts, we're making sure nothing happens to cash from the time it gets to the city, to the bank. We're making sure it's getting to the bank. Utility billing's a big one. We're making sure that residents are being billed for the correct usage, you know, of the water and sewer. We're making sure that the, that the rates are being billed appropriately, that they're the rates that have been approved by council. We're also looking at payroll, that's a big one, we're making sure that employees are being paid for time actually spent working. We're making sure that the employees are being paid at the correct rates, which have been approved by council, or that it's covered in a, in a union contract. And then, of course, we're, we're doing our normal year-end reconciliations to generate our, our year-end financial statements, which is this bound document that you have. In addition to our audit, we're also in communication with the city throughout the year. We have a great relationship with, with your staff, you know, with your former treasurer, Mary Ellen, we were, we were in constant communication with her, also with, you know, your city manager, Elaine, and, you know, now with, with Megan here, you know, we've also been in contact with her, and we've actually visited the city offices a few times, and we're scheduled to be there again on Tuesday. So again, we have a great working relationship with the city. So again, we have a great working relationship with the city. That's what we prefer, because for us, the worst thing for us would be, we have no contact with the city throughout the year. We come in after the year is over to do our audit, and then we're addressing problems at that point, which is not a good thing. So, you know, we like being in contact with the city throughout the year to head off any serious problems, and I think that that process seems to work very well on both ends. So that's all I have. Any questions? Yes?
I guess the only thing, I was reading through the big book. A lot of it has to do with the pension funds and the healthcare, so how are you viewing that for us right now? I mean, from what we currently have?
Sure. I guess I'll kind of address them separately. So the pension, you, I believe you're about what they call 70% funded, which is, I know it's going to sound crazy, that's actually a good thing. You are not considered underfunded under the state rules. And so the way that works is, your actuary actually determines how much you are to contribute to your pension plan every year. And they give that number to you, and you're required to make that contribution, and the city has always done that. So the reason you're not 100% funded is because there are so many variables that go into that. So, you know, maybe the market doesn't do very well in a specific year. You know, there are all kinds of estimates that go into the calculation of what the actuary gives you for the contribution. You know, it's based on how they think the market's going to do, what they think the life expectancy is of all the people in the plan. There are literally dozens of variables that go into that. So that's just a result of some of the differences in the variables. And again, at 70% funded, you are not considered underfunded under state law, so your pension's in good shape. Now, retirees' healthcare is a little bit different, because unlike pension, under state law, you have to fund your pension actuarially. So the actuary determines your contribution, you have to make it. Well, the state of Michigan does not require you to fund your retirees' healthcare that way. You can actually fund it on what we call a pay-as-you-go basis. So what that means from a practical standpoint is, you can actually fund it as you feel like you have the funds available in your budget, and that's actually okay under the state rules, believe it or not. And the interesting thing about the retirees' healthcare is, even though I believe you are, I think you're only, I think you're about 10% funded, somewhere in that range, but under the state's definition, you're actually not considered underfunded, believe it or not. And that's because what your annual required contributions come out to, it's actually, ends up being less than, because it's, this is very technical, because it ends up being less than 12% of your annual revenues in your general fund, you're not considered underfunded. So take that for what it's worth. But in my opinion, you are underfunded in your retirees' healthcare. That's just the reality of it. So.
Now, next year, we're going to have, when we go back to revenue, we're going to actually have some dips in revenue because of the TIFA. We'll actually be opposite of this year, correct?
That's correct. So theoretically, when you run the calculation next year, you may be technically underfunded because your revenues, sure, are less than they were this fiscal year.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, guys.
All right. Moving on to financial business, disbursements including payroll of $288,567.25.
I make a motion to approve the expenditures, including payroll, for $288,567.25.
Support. Questions?
Page seven of 29. Looks like we bought a couple signs or something from some company. What were those?
What page did you say?
Seven.
Seven. Is that Dornbos?
Yes.
Those are those wayfinding signs that we purchased through the grant.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Kellahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Mayor Vanamash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Moving on to unfinished business, we have board appointments. Most, if not all, are renewals.
They all are.
So they're all reappointments? And they're all appointed by the commission?
Yes.
None of them have to be done by me? Good. Okay, perfect. So let's start with the first one, zoning board of appeals. We have one application and one vacancy, and it's for the reapplications by Kim Wile at 157 Brown Street. Can I get a motion?
A move. We appoint Kim Wile to the ZBA vacancy. Support.
Motion support. Any questions or concerns on this? Hearing none?
Mr. Wrangler, roll call.
Voice, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to, we do have one vacancy in TIFA we did not get an application for, so we are looking for one. And we are, we have two applications for the historical commission, and we have three vacancies, so we're also looking for one more for that. But first, we have Scott Tisdale at 123 North Fifth Street. Can I get a motion to approve his application?
Some moved.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. And then next, we have Rosalie Squires at 211 Michigan.
Some moved.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to the board of review, we have one vacancy and one application, and it's Mary Westholt at 165 South Water. Can I get a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Support.
Any questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to new business, we're going to skip over 11A and go to 11B, which is the kayak launch.
On behalf of the Marine City
Community and Economic Development Board, we are before you tonight with a request for the approval to proceed with construction of the Aaron Biff LeBoon Bridge kayak launch, Phases 1 and 1.5, for the spring of 2020, and to approve the expenditure of not more than $2,500 for this purpose. The board has been working with Laurie Eschenberger, chief planner and GIS for the St. Clair County Metropolitan Planning Commission, and also the manager for the, excuse me, I've had bronchitis, for the Blue Water Trail, Blue Ways of St. Clair, and with the Friends of St. Clair River, and with Superintendent Mike Ittrich in developing these plans. The proposed location is at the northwest side of the Boone Bridge, LeBoon Bridge. If you look in your packets on page five and six, as they're numbered in your packets, you'll see on page five is the county assessor's plat for that property. You see the own property on both sides of that bridge. The proposed park, again, is on the northern side of the bridge. If you look on page six, the area is outlined in red there, and Laura just passed out an updated version. I have to apologize, these plans went in early, and since they were printed up, there were a few minor changes. So the sheet that Laura passed out shows the actual footage. It's about 35 feet at the northern side of that property. There's also a picture from ground level circled there in your packet on page seven. The building of the kayak launch site is consistent with the Marine City master plan and the recreation plan, and we anticipate the plan proceeding in three phases beginning in 2020. Phase 1 would consist of ladders being placed on the seawall at the above location, painted in a bright color for safety, cleats on the seawall for a kayak tie-up, a leash device so that people could chain or tie up their kayaks if they wanted to walk into town, and a sign identifying the site. Once we started looking at, you know, the minimum, we thought, well, how could we enhance this as we move forward? And so that's where Phase 1.5 comes in. For a very small additional cost, we could provide the launch site with a floating dock that would be attached to the seawall to help in retrieving the kayaks, a wayfinding sign with a map of Marine City and walking directions to places of interest without town, throughout town, excuse me, and a sign-in book like you'd find at national parks so that we could track the usage of the site. If you look on the following page, the costs of Phases 1 and 1.5 are highlighted there. The initial Phase 1, consisting of just the ladders, the lockup, and a launch sign, would be about $550. Adding the additions of the floating dock and the materials to build that and et cetera, we're adding an additional $545 to the cost. Superintendent Ittrich tells us that a portable toilet runs about $120 a month, so if we were going to provide that through the June, July, August, September, that would be an additional $480. Think about the people that are going to use this site, coming down maybe from St. Clair or going up and back. Having a portable toilet available would be a pretty nice convenience. The cost for the wayfaring sign is based on Mike's estimates. Again, I think we can do that for a lot less, making kind of a homemade project and using Google Earth to get a picture of the area. But that's his estimate, so we included it, and that may offset some of the material costs for the, what do you call that little stand that it's in?
The kiosk.
The kiosk, thank you. Mike estimates the cost of the wayfaring sign, as I said, about $325, but like I say, depending on how we want to do that, we can perhaps eliminate a great deal of that cost. Additional costs for labor, the signage, materials, et cetera, we estimated at about $600. Again, that's a high estimate based on my research into the cost of materials, et cetera. We've already had someone perhaps volunteer to supply the barrels for us that would go under the floating dock, so those costs, again, would be minimalized. But at this point, we're estimating Phase 1 and 1.5 together to be about $2,500, and that's what we're going to ask you folks for tonight. Following 2020, Phase 2, we would hope to continue with the portable toilet and add picnic tables and perhaps a source of drinkable water. Moving forward to Phase 3 would be the idea of establishing that area as a Marine City Park, including a boardwalk ramp area that would allow us to qualify for ADA, an ADA accessible kayak launch, which would be provided at this point by St. Clair County. Talking with Mike and looking at perhaps doing a horseshoe drive in the area, maybe putting up a brick-and-mortar bathroom pavilions, maybe some vending machines, Wi-Fi and charging stations. A lot of this is, you know, what's the best we could hope for. Obviously, we don't necessarily need to get everything to make that park a very nice addition to Marine City. The master plan would have to be revised in order to add another city park. However, the planning commission is already working on its one-year or one-and-a-half-year revisions to the master plan, and this could be added very easily in time to get this park together. Phases 2 and 3 obviously are going to involve multiple funding sources. We have grants out there for recreational water use that we will be looking into applying for. St. Clair County through, Laurie Eschenberger through St. Clair County has been very helpful in, you know, pointing us in the right direction for these. However, as you know, grants usually involve a buy-in on the part of the grant requester. We feel that this initial Phase 1 and 2 expenditure of $2,500 goes a long way to saying the city has a commitment to this project moving forward, and we've got our, excuse me, we've got our ante in the pot here. The phases obviously can be expanded and contracted based on, you know, what this commission decides and whatever funding we can come up with. Liability for the park and for the launch is covered by the sovereign immunity clause under Michigan Government's Court Liability Act. Did I say that right? So there's no additional liability to the city. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to questions or comments and see what you think.
All right. I got several questions. I know originally, the original discussion, a long, long time ago, was we talked about putting this at the end of East St. Clair Street because there was a huge lot there, no seawall, easier access, parking could be facilitated. So in this particular instance, we're going to take up some of our transient boating, so how come it was moved from there to here?
The reason the launch site is at the northern part of that piece of property is because we have the pilings boards, if you want to call them, for the transient boaters further south of that, so this would not impinge on what's already there, excuse me, for the transient boaters.
Well, they still could use this because the seawall here and the other one didn't have the seawall, which made it easier for people to launch a kayak. I guess I'm just concerned about that. And then, it's right next to the old foundation from the original bridge. Is that property now owned by someone else?
Not that I'm aware of.
I think that's still city property. Mike said we really couldn't build anything there, though, because of the, he would have to arrange the riprap and...
Well, there's a foundation there. That's where the old bridge was.
Right.
And has any of this been brought up to some of the neighbors in the area so that the neighborhood is aware of?
Not at this point, no.
Okay. That'd be another thing that I would suggest, because this will bring in a lot of vehicles, and if you put in a portage on, and I'm not against a kayak launch, I think it's a good idea, but I'm just concerned because I thought the other property actually was kind of a better location. Away from this bridge, it was a huge lot, didn't have that, which means they could take their kayaks and go right off because there was no seawall, so they didn't have to have ladders and they... So they didn't have to have ladders and they didn't have to have that.
Well, there's a, go ahead.
We did meet with Mike and we did discuss different areas. We initially had actually thought about more of where the boat tie-up is. And then in meeting with Mike, we decided that the area, those thirty-five feet or less, would be an ideal place just because we already have, there's, the life ring is there, it's conducive for signage, there's a lot of parking along the road right there. And it gives opportunities, you know, for future that if we wanted to do something with the horseshoe, you know, drop off or whatever. So the area, we visited, you know, even today, there is enough room here that you still have the boat tie-ups and it gives enough room that we actually pulled it off of the last tie-up about five feet or so, or six feet. So, you know, in discussion with Mike and other people, that was, and with Lori, right? That was one of the best places that we thought.
You know, there's no parking on the one side of Bell River Road.
Well, you know, I don't know how many people would be utilizing this. I don't know how many people use East China. We could find out through Lori and find out exactly how many cars that we're talking at one given time, but there's parking along here.
But I mean, this, the one side of the street is, no parking is allowed. So you gotta park on the opposite side.
Right. And there's Robertson Street there as well. And again, we don't anticipate ten, fifteen, twenty cars lining up to use this launch. We're looking maybe three, four, and maybe a car or a truck with a trailer.
But I think it would be a good idea that we also discuss with the homeowners in the area so that they know what's coming down the pipe so they're not surprised by any type of, all of a sudden this thing materializes and they're all going, wow, nobody told us. So I just think that, you know, the people in that area should be included in some of the discussions somehow so that they know what's going on and what could possibly go into this location.
If we, if you decide to make this a park, it will require a change to the master plan, which will require public input. So that could be covered under that.
Now, when we talked about doing a kayak launch, I thought we were going directly to a, something similar to what East China did do it. Is there a reason they're not willing to, because they provided most of the, most of the launch to East China?
Right. But we have to provide the infrastructure to that, to which that launch is attached, which is a boardwalk and ramp that would lead up to that launch. And that's where the big money would be spent. And that's why we're doing it a bite at a time.
Right. I understand that. I'm just trying to see where, how we could, you know.
The reason why we kind of brought it into the phases in talking to Lori, we have to show that we have skin in the game now. You know, in order to get any funding or funding through grants, we have to show that we are supporting this. So if we make those first couple steps, they will come forward right through the county and will help us with the rest of the funding or help us develop that area, that section. So, you know, that is...
And an additional reason for choosing that area is its proximity to downtown. People can tie up their kayaks, walk across the bridge, and they're right downtown for dining or shopping or whatever it is they want to do. Moving it up to the foot of St. Clair, they're considerably further away from the downtown area, which is one of the major attractions in Marine City. And, you know, a significant factor in putting this launch at this location.
Both are still within walking distance. I mean, the one at the end of East St. Clair is only, what, four or five blocks from the thing? And even on this one, you gotta go all the way around the bridge to get it, which isn't a big deal.
It's a big difference, Commissioner, than walking from St. Clair Street. So you want to make it as easy as possible for folks to access downtown.
And I had the same thing with this, with the street parking here because I drive down that. It's an awful narrow street. But are you going to sign parking spots on that side of the street for them or sign it? Because there are fishing people that do that and come down there and park there. And are we going to have confusion with, well, I got here first?
Well...
Are you going to try to reserve some spots there?
Obviously, things like that are possible. Is it probable, are we going to have a problem with parking? I really doubt it, Commissioner.
I think, what, they have six spots down there at the East China spot, yeah, asphalt.
Well, you could easily get six cars between Bell River and Robertson there.
I mean, when I first glanced at this and I read through it, it didn't say anything about parking. That's why I was asking about that.
Well, there, we had talked at one point with Superintendent Ettrich about having a minimum amount of parking in that grassy area there. But since we went to the idea of making the whole thing a park, we've sort of stepped back away from it.
Did they cut off that, that little piece of Bell River that went, I would say, east of Robbins Road? Or was it a little paved area of the street that was still there? Did they take that out when they built the bridge?
When they did, I believe so, yeah. If you look at the, some of the pictures give you a broader view.
It's right in front of that house on the corner of Robbins. They got it rounded here now on this one.
Yeah. If you look on page six.
But it used to, it used to come down there further in them houses.
Right.
Okay.
How are you planning on attaching the floating dock to the seawall?
That's something, and the ladders are a question too. That's something we will talk to Mike about when we get to that point. Something as simple as putting a couple of additional two-by-fours or two-by-sixes in the water there to attach it to. It's gotta be movable, obviously, because of the water level and because of, you know, little bulk weights and things like that when you go. But it doesn't have to be Titanic.
Well, you need something so if you first have a wind blowing ninety degrees to the shoreline, it's not going to rip the dock away from your supports and send it floating away. You also need something that's somewhat tamper resistant so someone who's having a bad day just can't go down there and set it loose.
Cut it free, yeah.
And then are you planning on letting this freeze in the, in the wintertime or are you going to pull it?
It's gonna be an eight-by-eight dock.
Yeah.
It'll be removable.
I also made a mention to Laura, because we've installed a few of these, that we've actually had to put brackets on each side of the dock and drive poles through welded eyelets that were screwed to, to keep the dock from doing exactly. And then it could raise up and down with it. Because there's quite a few spots that, we used to see more of them along Bell River that used the same docking system. As you can see, that even in the, some of the precast foam or plastic docks, they actually have holes, steel sleeves where you actually drive the poles through them when they install.
Are we going to have any issues with the DEQ?
We were just talking about.
You may...
If you, if it's purely a seasonal structure, you probably are permit exempt. You start affixing to the bottom land, you might trigger a permit requirement. I mean, it's still not a big, it's not a big deal.
Yeah. Talking to Mike, unclear as to where there is good ground under the surface there because there is a lot of leftover riprap and teario from the bridge. So not sure about placement where you could actually even find a spot where you could drill something or pound something into the shoreline there or the, under the riverbed. Also, one other thing in conversations that I had with Mike today, talking about signage. You've only got priced out one sign here. I don't know, you might need another one because you're going to want one for people coming from the water direction and people from the land direction.
I think, I think I did have a price for two signs.
Based on the wayfinding signage and costs that we have, the price that you have here in the quote is just one sign. So it'd be an additional, like, three fifty for another sign unless you chose to do something else. Instead of doing something similar to the wayfinding signs that we did, you could do something a little more basic, like what we have for our municipal parking signs downtown, which would be significantly cheaper. Obviously, they wouldn't have the logo or anything on it, but that would be something to stay within budget.
Well, we're willing, if nothing else, to be flexible. I know that, like I said, just from the point of view of drawing up this plan and getting it before you, we've gone through a couple of changes. So it's a work in progress. I think the important thing is that we recognize that this is something that's good for the city, it's good for the citizens of the city, it's relatively low cost, it can be expanded upon, or it can be left as is for, you know, as long as being necessary. But it certainly is worth considering and worth starting with.
You do have a lot of fishermen, though, that fish in this particular area, especially in the spring.
We did talk to Mike about that. That was one of his concerns and that's why we, you know, it is still open for fishing there. So it's like we said, we don't know if you're going to have twenty people out there, three people, one person. You just don't know. I don't know if it will be as busy as East China. You know, until you build it, you don't know who's going to come. But I think there's ample room also for fishing there.
Well, you just don't want the fishermen hooking into the kayakers.
Yeah. No, I, no, I get that.
It looks like there's plenty of land there in phases, and I'm not against it, I'm just saying in phases, you may look at putting in some angle parking or something in there.
Could be.
In, you know, that would be for the kayaks.
Sure.
That's why we broke it out into phases and we're hoping that at least getting like a green light to move forward, then we can at least start something and get the ball rolling and...
Well, I guess the biggest thing is since it's going to be a floating dock, if things don't work or there's issues, you can always move it.
Absolutely.
It's not like we're permanently altering the waterfront.
Well, what's the commission think?
I do like the idea that it is, you know, we could actually, as a trial run, see how it goes at first instead of being a large permanent investment.
Right.
And see how much it could use. I'll make a motion to approve it. But with, I want to put a couple areas that come back to us after you've talked to some of the neighbors and maybe before we get an install, but to actually go forward with the progress, the plan.
You just want to do Phase one?
Would, would send in a letter to the neighbors? Meet that criteria or?
Something to let them know.
Just communicate with them of some type.
Sure.
And ask them for any feedback if they have any?
Not a problem.
You may not get much, but you may get some ideas.
Okay. So are we doing Phase one through 1.5 or what are you doing for the?
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we were, yeah, one and 1.5.
Yeah. It would entail one and 1.5.
Yes.
Yes.
So with that, so I still have support?
Support.
Okay. Any other questions on it?
Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Mayor Van Damme?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Hassel?
Can I have a few minutes of a sidebar before we get to that?
Yep.
So two weeks ago, you asked for a moment of silence for the dearly departed and include, included the Detroit officer, Rashine McLean. Well, when you hear that, you don't take into consideration the effects that a fallen officer has on, you know, maybe our local department. Full-time officer Dan Baxendale used to be his partner. So it affected him and I just wanted to say that we appreciate your, your kind words that night. He's attending the funeral tomorrow. So if you see the Marine City car on TV or anything like that, I just wanted to give you a heads up that he'll be down there representing the department and his friend. Also, adding to that, you'll still see that the guys are wearing the goatees. In the department, we took up collection and normally we've taken that money and put it towards local charities. This year, we actually donated to the family of, of the fallen officer. So that's where we're at with that. So, thank you. Out of my car. So back in 2012, Chief Tiller at the time had purchased two Dodge Chargers. The one Dodge Charger was ultimately given to the code enforcement building official and that had significant problems with it. Ultimately, that had to have a camshaft repair in it. That was under warranty, didn't cost the city any money. The sister car to that one, which is my current car, now sits at the side of the building and has the same problem with it. It's a camshaft issue. And because it's out of warranty, it's eighty-eight thousand miles and the timeframe is gone, it's no longer covered. So a verbal estimate just from transmission physician alone, that cost was going to be about $3,500. On top of that, car also is needing a potential transmission, which would be in the range from $2,500 to $3,500. He wouldn't know until he, he took an official look at it. So I contemplated, what, what should we do with this car? And with the last Charger being sold for only $2,000, I figured it was in our best interest probably just to let this one sit and come to you tonight and ask you for some funding for a new patrol car. So I put out sealed bids, contacted a couple dealerships. They put in their sealed bids. I asked for a 2018 and equivalent year model pickup truck. And some of you may ask why a pickup truck? There's been instances that guys have used their own vehicles, AKA their trucks, and picked up like, found bikes. We've gone to a couple cases where we've, you know, executed search warrants and had to take bunches of property and we're putting in the back of our personal vehicles. I think this pickup truck can be used to supplement that now. I don't think guys should be using their own. None of the bigger stuff will fit in the back of these Ford utilities. So with the sealed bid, I believe it was Jorgensen Ford, put in a quote for a 2018 Ford F-150, which they currently have on the lot, in the amount of $29,995. My funding, I have a salvage vehicle account, which is no longer being utilized. I want to delete that account so Megan can close that and we can move on with that. I know that was kind of the pain in the butt for Mary Ellen to keep track of. But we're no longer doing salvage vehicle inspections, too much chaos going on with the state with that program. So I cut that program. I want to close that program out. So with that, there's $15,656 in that account. I will need an additional $14,338.67 plus around $1,800 for some equipment to put in the new, the new truck if it's approved. So I come before you tonight asking for that approval.
Let's start with a motion to approve so we can discuss it.
I'll make a motion, we approve the purchase of the police pickup truck for $29,995.
Support.
Motion's supported, all right. So now we can discuss it.
Yes, please.
Ready?
I am.
All right.
I hope.
You know me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna grow you, Jim.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. So here's the thing. You're going to use this as your car, not a police car?
Well, it's a police responder package, but it will primarily be my car, yes.
Okay. So in the past, we have always purchased police cars and then whatever car was the oldest was then retired on to...
We have three that are in service. The two, two new Ford utilities, and there's a 2009 Chevy Tahoe that sits on the side of the building that doesn't get used because there's a lot wrong with it, and it's going to cost me a boatload of money to fix that one, too. And that's going to be the next budget issue.
Well, that was part of my question here, because I think some of it, too, is we've got to make sure that we're taking better care of some of these vehicles. I think we still need to have a system in place for replacement vehicles. I know I've brought this up multiple times. I would rather see us just replace the police vehicle and figure out what we're going to do with that SUV, and make sure that those guys have the proper vehicles, because otherwise, we have that one sitting there. And then what are we going to do with the old one? That's not really too viable.
It's going to have to be towed out of there, whoever takes it.
Scrapped?
Scrapped, or you can, you put it up for bids, an auction, whatever, for, see if somebody wants it for five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars for parts. I have no idea.
What did the last one get us?
The last one that just sold? Around two thousand.
But that one ran.
That one ran, yeah.
But that already had the new...
That already had the brand-new engine in it.
Yeah. What's the lifespan, you think? If you use this as a chief's vehicle or as a utility vehicle, would extend the life of this vehicle?
If this stays my primary car, it will probably ten-plus years. I mean, the current patrol cars that are actively being used probably rack up about thirty thousand a year. I can't see me putting thirty thousand miles on it here, to and from my house, straight to work.
And it won't be response miles either, which is different.
It'll be response miles only if I leave the office to back the guys up.
Right. But what I mean is the majority of the miles will be training, because they could take that then for training.
Correct, yeah.
And you will need a...
It won't be used for active patrol.
You do need, actually, a decent vehicle, because you are going in staff and command school.
Thank you for that.
And Troy is a long drive with a beater.
Correct.
It is.
And I'm not comfortable at this point taking the 2009 Chevy Tahoe to Troy every day. I mean, every light in the center console is lit up, the electrical issues that has on it, it won't make it. I'm going to be stuck on a freeway somewhere calling for help. It won't make it for the six months that I'm gone.
Yes.
So I'm a little confused on all the different cars. So your car right now is...
It's dead in the water in the north.
Well, what type is it? Is it Charger?
It's a Dodge Charger.
Charger.
Yes, sir.
The Tahoe is on the side of the building, not...
It's the K-9.
It was the old K-9 car. It's a 2009. We've had it. It was purchased under the Stone Garden monies way back in the day. It's got a hundred and seven thousand miles on it. It's rusting. The rims are rusty, but that's a conversation, I think, for the next budget.
Your vehicle, though, other than the problems with the camshaft and the trans, is it rusting? Is it, I mean, is it still in, is the body still in good shape?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, for, what, eight thousand dollars instead of thirty, we could have that car back on the road?
Roughly. But the problem is, is I don't know what else is going to go wrong with that car. And then if we turn around and sell it, it only sold for two. So why I come before you tonight for that is to put eight thousand potentially into the car that only sold for two just a couple months ago, it didn't make any sense to me.
Okay.
Another question. So why not buy this as a new police vehicle, replace the K-9 unit, and then buy another sedan or something for you as a police vehicle?
Well, I went down that road, so we subscribe to what's called My Deal program. So you can go into the state, and you can see all the spec sheets of what they have to offer. So I went under the spec sheet, and I got excited, because they were offering a 2020 Ford sedan hybrid that you could get, like, two hundred miles electric, and then, and I'm like, well, that's perfect. I could save gas mileage. So I called the dealership and said, well, how long is it going to take to get this car? And they said about twelve to fourteen weeks, but the My Deal spec sheet is wrong. I said, how is it wrong? They said, well, it's listed on there as a Ford Taurus, and they're not making the Ford Taurus anymore. It'll be a Ford Fusion. And I don't know if you know anything about the Ford Fusion, but nobody's going to fit in a Ford Fusion with all their gear on, et cetera. And that was about twenty-three, twenty-four thousand. So I got excited, and until they told me it was a Ford Fusion.
But there's other, I mean Chrysler, and both Chrysler and General Motors also make police vehicles.
They're about thirty, thirty-one thousand dollars.
I'm talking if you buy something of less. What I'm trying to say is, you need a police car to replace the Tahoe, fine. But I don't think that you need a full-blown huge vehicle if you're just going to use this as the chief's car.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm only going by the base of the price of this. Because under the My Deal spec sheet, even the price of the Ford Utility went up to about thirty-three thousand. So this is the cheapest one that we can get, even for the 2020.
And I'm not arguing with that. I just think that this should be used as a police vehicle, and we look at a different vehicle for you, is what I'm saying. Something a little bit more economical.
So you're thinking of purchasing two vehicles, then?
Well, he's going to have to anyway.
Not till July?
Well, but this way, you could get this one now, and you could replace the Tahoe. We could find something else that's more, something a little bit more reasonable for our vehicle because of what your use is. Why use a police vehicle, and all you're going to do is, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that.
I would rather, that's the way I'd rather spend the money for the city, is buy another police vehicle, replace the one, and then look for something else that's a little bit more economical and user-friendly for people to, for you to drive.
Could you come back to us at the next meeting with some pricing on a, a more of a, I wouldn't say the Ford Fusion, but another vehicle, a sedan of some type?
Well, the price is even for, let's just say, a Dodge Charger, which I don't want to go down that road of a Dodge Charger with the problems we just are getting out of. The Chevys, I believe it's a Malibu, but still over thirty thousand. And the only reason I'm coming to you with this is just the price point alone. That's it.
Wouldn't it be better to get two of these?
He's only got one on the lot. This, and so the guy that put in, that put in the bid, I had contacted him. He said this was a department that had ordered it in 2018, 2019. They backed out of their order, and it's just sitting. And he said, I'll give it to you for under thirty thousand. I said, put it in a sealed bid, and we'll go from there.
But there's other things you can do as far as, even if you didn't go through the Michigan thing, I mean, there's vehicles through the companies that you can get that are, you know, have a few thousand miles on them. They're company vehicles that they use. I mean, there's a lot of different other ways to go to get a vehicle for what your use is. You see what I'm saying? Versus this. I'm just trying to look at the economics for the taxpayer, that's all. And you need, you need a police vehicle to replace the one. I would rather do that, and then look at something different for a vehicle that you could use.
If we go down that road, it's going to cost more in equipment, because you're going to need to put a cage in it, you're going to need to transfer the computer over into it. So it's, instead of needing eighteen hundred, I'll probably need about five or six, because I don't know what a cage would cost.
Can you put a cage in that style vehicle?
You can. Clay Township has one, they have a cage in it.
Do they really?
Yes. So you're just, it's just a higher, a higher price point if we decide to put it on the road for the guys.
I personally like the thought of having a vehicle that has that extra capacity that you can move larger pieces of evidence with, you can, that won't fit in the back of, you know, Explorer, per se, certainly not a Charger trunk. So, I mean, I, for me, I think it makes sense, especially if we're getting a good deal on it, so...
Yeah, I don't have a trouble with this vehicle, but I think it should be a police vehicle. And then we look at something else for the chief that's not full-blown police vehicle that's just going to be driven around town. That's my issue with this.
As a potential option is, I don't know if this is something that could be done, but could you purchase this vehicle because it is a, in essence, one-time deal, that it's a lower price than what you could get into it for anything else? Have him use it for the first six months, and then, when we get into the next budget year, buy something that will be his vehicle and transfer this over to be the police vehicle.
That's a great option.
Well, what are the costs to retrofit it if, I mean, or are you going to... What is the additional cost to make this out as a police vehicle? Because you might as well do it now.
It's going to be, it'll be stripping down the 2009 Chevy Tahoe, taking the computer and the in-car camera out of that one, and putting it in the new truck. And it'll be addition of a push bumper and addition of a cage, and that's where your price comes in.
What about the light bars?
We're not putting light, the light bar is about eleven hundred, twelve hundred dollars.
And what about markings?
I think the last one rang me about eight hundred.
Okay. So I would rather retrofit this as a police vehicle total now, and then look at that idea, that your next vehicle, then you would pass this off so the officers can use it, and we look at something else for you. But you might as well put it into a police vehicle now.
Or we could put it into a police vehicle in the next budget, as soon as the next budget year runs through.
That will allow me then to prepare in my next budget.
To put that in it.
Funding for that retrofit.
And it would keep this price point down for, at least just, and then, but it's got to be done in the next, in the next budget.
Correct.
So in the meantime, what are we going to do with the Tahoe? Are you going to get rid of that, too?
Next year's budget. I'll have to keep it.
Not till next year, but I mean, that thing's going to sit, which isn't good for it.
Well, on occasion, it's driven just locally around town. I may jump in it to go meet with the city manager, that type of thing, but to take it out of town, it will not be used for active patrol. It cannot be. There's just a lot wrong with that truck.
But you could actually start the process of stripping it down.
Yeah.
Before the budget year, because it's going to take a couple.
Yeah.
Did he say that this vehicle was already purchased by another police department?
It was ordered by another vehicle.
They ordered it as a police vehicle.
Yes, it's a police responder package. So it's got the frame, the heavy-duty brakes, the transmission, all that stuff on it.
Larger alternator.
Yes.
Ask if they have wheel liners. They never put wheel liners in the boxes anymore. And I hate to do this, but I, I mean, I've owned a million pickup trucks, but I always make them put the wheel liners in, and they usually will throw them in, because that'll save your box long-term with all the stuff that gets tossed up in there. That's what rots those boxes out.
Are you talking like a bed liner?
No, wheel liners.
Wheel liner on the inside.
Oh, on the inside? I don't know if it has it or not.
You can ask them, and usually, if you pound them a little bit, they're like a hundred bucks for a pair, they could throw them in for what you're paying for this vehicle, and that's going to save your box long-term. It's just another thing to think about.
So does the commission have a, do we all have a handle on what has been proposed?
So you're going to get rid of the car?
Yep.
And you're going to eventually take the Tahoe, strip that, retrofit that stuff on this vehicle?
Yes.
Then this will eventually be used as a police car, and then the next budget will determine what you can use. But in the meantime, they could also use this if they have to.
Correct.
For a spare vehicle.
Yep.
All right. I can buy into that.
Everybody good on this?
I like the idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we did make a motion to purchase this, but with the add-on agreement that we made with you about getting those things done.
Correct.
And support's still good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns on this? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Merkich?
Yes.
Mayor Vanavas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Moving on to the city manager's report.
Not much else to report on, other than the fact that we did receive the sixteen thousand dollar SEMCOG grant for infrastructure mapping. Unfortunately, it's only for the federal roads. We weren't able to do any more, but every little bit helps, so this will be something that Waitram will work on doing GIS mapping for us. And there is no match for that grant.
Okay. Questions?
Yep. This is on some other issues here. The issue with people paying for their sidewalks, did we get that resolved?
We have not received billing from the concrete company yet.
But are the bills that the people received that had the city do it, are those what they're going to pay?
We haven't received the invoice from the concrete company yet, so we don't know the final numbers. We don't have that yet.
Well, wait a minute. So you quoted, so a person...
With estimates.
Had the city, but they think that that's what they're paying.
I have not seen anything in particular about it, but I talked to Mike about it, and he said we don't have final numbers yet, because we haven't received a final bill.
Because people want to pay, I mean, I left you the message for the one person, been in three times to try to pay. They had the sheet from the city, and I know I talked to you about it, that that would be...
I've not seen the sheet, whoever it was, if they left something for me, I've not seen it.
A copy was made by the staff and given, was supposed to be given to you the first time the person came in, and then the person came in ultimately two more times, once after I talked to you about, could they bring that sheet in? And they brought their sheet in again, and they were denied three times trying to pay their bill.
I've not seen anything. I did ask staff about it, and they said that, what they told them is that we did not have the information yet, and that we are still waiting on final numbers. I asked them in the future if the person does come in to take the name and number, so that we can call them back when we have any final numbers and can get that final bill established.
All right. I'll get you the name and number of that particular person, and I'll work with you on that, because they want to pay.
Is that, are you waiting for the billing from Conne, from the...
Concrete.
Okay, concrete.
Yep.
Not from toys, but from the actual concrete install.
Yeah. My only concern is that we gave them all a sheet and said, if the city does it, this is your cost plus a fee. Most people are assuming that's their cost. And I understand, but...
Any tenders underground, you, there's always could be extra.
Well, but I think we need to, if we do this another time, we need to put more information in there again, so that they understand that what they got, they may be paying more. And I think, huh?
Or less.
Or less.
Because they were estimates.
Yes, and I think some of them didn't understand either that they could have hired the contractor outside of the city, and they could have got a refund for their, part of their materials. So I've talked to a few people, so there's a lot of confusion on that.
We've had a lot of information out there about it, both on our website and in...
But you have some people that don't use computers that I'm dealing with, too, so...
I was going to say, we've mentioned it in our newsletter, which everybody gets the newsletter.
Okay.
And at any time, they can come in the office, and we can certainly provide more information.
I'll try to convince...
I've received one of those letters. That letter is very self-explanatory. I mean, all you got to do is read it.
I will try to convince the person to come in a fourth time to see if you want to...
Or just call me.
All right. I saw that you had the safe routes to school thing listed on here that they finally came through. The issue is, have they ever given you anything on Parker, where they took out all the buttons for the lights, and they said they were gonna re...
What do you mean, anything on that?
Well, they were gonna reevaluate it. They sent us a letter saying, when it was questioned, what are we supposed to do when somebody presses the button? They didn't know, so they removed all the lights along Parker.
They pulled it all out.
So you can't use them.
Correct.
And they said they were gonna reevaluate it. Have we heard anything?
That won't be until sometime next year. There was something else that I think was under development, there might've been some copyright that they were working on procuring or something like that. Right now, it just stands as just a regular pedestrian walk, that's it.
Crossway, even though they didn't take them out on the side streets, because they didn't have anything to do with it.
Because those are our streets, yeah.
Alright. And on your Parklet, I did, went back to the Lions Club, and conned them all into helping out for the Parklet in the spring.
Thank you very much.
So that's one group that'll help, and I'm gonna work on a couple more. But one of the things I'd like to know is if you can tell me if there's some specific things that he's looking for from people, like, I know we probably need a couple cement guys.
Yeah, when, when we get down to the details and start working on that, that's something that we should be able to be very project-specific about looking for volunteers that either can do digging or mowing, weeding, whatever it is.
Well, I'm trying to work them over now, to get them ready for the spring, so...
I'll, I'll get Mike to keep working forward on that. We've been purchasing some of the equipment for the playground, so they're starting to get that in.
Yeah, I, I think we can pull together enough people. There's a couple other ones that I know that do cement work and stuff that I'm gonna talk into. They worked on the project up in St. Clair, didn't know we were gonna have anything, so I'm gonna try to count them all into coming in the spring, so...
I'd much appreciate it.
If there's any other groups out there, well, you know, like the Boy Scouts or anything, we can talk to all of them about helping out, and we'll get that thing done one way or another, so that's it.
Any other questions for the city manager?
Yeah, I just wanna know, does that just notify us when they're doing stuff like at midnight?
Generally, no.
Nope.
My God, they had a big sucking machine there. And I thought at least they'd have the courtesy to knock on the door and say that we're, we're gonna be working here.
One of, one of the pitfalls, I think, of living close to a substation, huh?
Yeah, I get to tell them where the problem is.
And thank, and thank you for coming in and talking to us about when we had the power outage. So last Wednesday, when we had the power outage, we were in there still working. We were actually about two minutes close to getting ready to call it for the day when the power came back on, so we stuck it out and got a lot of work done that day, fortunately.
Anyone else have anything for the city manager? If not, we're gonna move on to commissioner privilege liaison reports. And since you're first on the list today...
I'm not a liaison.
No. You get commissioner privilege, so...
I'm gonna, this one I'm just gonna pass on to Bill.
Oh, yeah.
So you make me talk about the planning commission.
You bet.
The planning commission is now gonna direct, they've got stuff this month, but we talked about it a little bit last month, is the marijuana. And it's a big project, but it's gonna be a lot of mapping, and then getting back to the council on what they wanna do, and if it falls like any other units, you can't have it. You look at the rules that the state set up, you can't, I have to look at that one, 'cause one said 500 feet, the other one said 100 feet, on the, on the rules that we got from the state. And I know that New Baltimore is 300 feet, and they're, they're having trouble, people don't understand that the lady wanted hers mapped in, so she could set up her sales store. And she said, but it's just across the street. The houses, the residential's just across the street. Just rezon, just rezone mine. And we can't do that. We have to rezon it by section, and we have to rezon it by property line, to the property line, not to the, the structure that's on the property. So, so they'll be working on that.
Anything, anything else for commissioner privilege for us?
No, I said about the, I thought they'd at least knock on our doors and say, we're gonna keep you awake for a while.
Yeah, I just wanna remind everybody that we have Merry Time Christmas on Saturday. After weeks of planning and talking and getting things together, we're, we're ready to roll. Start at 10:00, and, you know, certain events will go till 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock at night, so it should be a fun day. So just encourage everybody to come on out and enjoy the town, 'cause it is gonna be, it's gonna be our little hallmark moment, I think, so...
Alright, Lisa.
Okay, continuing on with that note, I gotta cover both the Lions and the Old News Boys. So the Lions for December 7th, from 10:00 to 3:00 at 545 Ward Street, we're having a craft show bake sale. We've got it loaded, we even opened up our back room, so that'll be going on all day, well, from 10:00 to 3:00 on Saturday. Then at night on Saturday, at HOH, the Helsar Home Motorcycle Club's gonna have their annual Christmas toy and food drive. They do a lot for the Old News Boys and the food pantry here. So you can either bring in a toy, canned food, or donations, and that's gonna be from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. They really deck it out for Christmas. They have cookies, they have all sorts of stuff. And like I said, they do a lot for the Old News Boys, bringing us a lot of toys, money, and, and even bicycles. They'll get us sometimes six, seven bikes for the kids. The last one is, the next, following next week, and Friday and Saturday, the Old News Boys will be out for the paper sales. Now, I know there's a lot of confusion port here and port out that they're not doing it. All the entities are separate. We're still doing it, so please watch out for us that day. We're gonna put out as many cones and whatever we can. It's supposed to be nice and cold. I see Arctic Blast is coming through that day.